The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, will hold a joint meeting with the Traffic and Parking Commission. They will meet in person on Thursday, February 1st, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of meeting to introduce a study and discussion of right-on-red ordinances and state laws for all traffic lights in the city of Salem. This meeting will introduce the data provided by the Traffic and Parking Department with additional data provided by the Police Department Traffic Division. We will also review the Federal Highway Administration's Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Guidance on Right-on-Red. Subsequent meetings will drill down on the data in three sections to be determined at this meeting. The backup material contains a map of all traffic lights and the data provided, as well as a list of articles related to right-on-red. This meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. In the agenda, you will find a link to the Right-on-Red shared drive, and you will also find a link to the webinar for Zoom. Password 493459. Telephone 877-853-5257 or 888-475-4499. The webinar ID is 834-57108395. The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in Council Chambers on Thursday, February 1st, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below. Notice that this meeting was posted on January 25th, 2024, at 5:34 PM. Absent from the committee is none. Also with us are, from the Committee of the Whole, everyone except the Council President, At this time, I'm going to let Mr. Kacharsky or the Chair of the Traffic and Parking Commission introduce their members.
All right, can you guys hear the mic all right? Okay. My name is Jaime Armidia. I'm the Chair of the Traffic and Parking Commission. We have a full attendance of the Commission present here today. I'm going to have everybody just grab the mic and state their name and their attendance
Brendan Casey.
Can everyone hear that okay?
No.
Brendan Casey.
Aaron Terroski.
Jeff Swartz.
Lieutenant David Tucker from the police.
That's all of us.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we're here to discuss targeted changes in red-on-red in Salem. When the order was submitted, there was a rather large outsized reaction that we would be removing red-on-red at every light in the city. And although some would welcome that change and can argue the case, that is not the intent tonight. First, we don't have direct control over any state traffic signals. And second, it's just not necessary right now. Instead, we're going to discuss where removing red-on-red makes sense from a safety perspective, including the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. Earlier last year, I requested the data from the Traffic and Parking Department on where red-on-red is allowed. Mr. Kacharsky was aware that the order was being submitted as we had talked about the data and how long it would take. The information ended up taking much longer to collect mainly because he went above and beyond what was asked for. He provided data on every light, both city and state-owned. And as happens, whenever he delves into traffic issues, he found variations between what is written in the ordinance and what is signed on our roads. As you know, from the list in the backup materials, red-on-red became the law in Massachusetts in 1980, the last state in the country to allow it. And it was done grudgingly, according to one article that I read. The federal government tied federal funds to the allowance of red-on-red. From the beginning, officials in each city and town decide which intersections are allowed for red-on-red. In fact, New York City never allowed red-on-red. The reasoning for allowing red-on-red was that it would reduce idling at traffic lights and therefore reduce gas consumption. This occurred during the oil embargo of the 1970s. And yes, I am old enough to remember when this happened, and I remember being in the car after the law was passed, and my father was at a red light, and somebody honked behind him, kind of letting him know that he could take a red-on-red. So we had a discussion about that. But, okay, so that was just a little aside. There doesn't seem to be any evidence, though, that allowing red-on-red has anything other than, was anything other than a feel-good measure. There doesn't seem to be anything to show that less gas was used or less pollution has been produced. But, a 1982 study pointed to a 40% increase in pedestrian accidents, 82% increase in bicycle accidents in New York State, 107% for pedestrians and 72% for bicycles in Wisconsin, 57% for pedestrians and 80% for bicycles in Ohio, and 82% for pedestrians in New Orleans. And this was in 1982. So, right from the beginning, it's shown to be a problem for safety. And the reason pointed to by several studies is that when drivers stop or slow down, as we see lately, at a red light, they're looking to the left to look for oncoming traffic so that they can kind of weave their way into traffic and not to the right or straight ahead until it's too late. So, like I said, even when the law was new, the impact was known, but states couldn't change their laws. So, that's just to give a little bit of background of what's been happening since the 1970s, really. And so, the plan tonight is Mr. Kacharsky is going to present the data on the map that you see enlarged on both sides and in front of you. And we're going to discuss, he's going to tell us how to read the map, what data's being presented there. And then we'll discuss the guidelines for the installation of no red-on-red as found in the manual. And then we'll try to divide up the map into three pieces so that we can take it in chunks in subsequent meetings and go through the lights, decide where changes need to be made in the ordinance, even if it's not to change the red-on-red as it exists today, but to update the ordinance. So at the end of all this, in a couple of weeks, we'll end up with changes that we'll go through for the ordinances to at least get them up to speed with what's signed or change the signs to be the same as the ordinance. Does that all make sense to everybody? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everyone hear me? So as the Counselor stated, when this order was first brought forward, we had a discussion, and I set about working with staff to inventory every traffic signal in the city. I figured if we were going to do it, we should try to do it as best we can. So, there's currently 46 total traffic signals in the city. 32 are under the jurisdiction of the city, and the other 14 are under the jurisdiction of the state. In the maps, you could see that we have different colored arrows. That's intended to represent the various approaches at each of the intersections. So, all of the green arrows are approaches where it's in the ordinance as such, stated that a right turn on red is restricted, and it's also signed so that the motorist sees it. There's nine of those locations right now. The pink-purple color arrow represents, it's not in the ordinance, but it is signed in the field. There are 10 locations which meet that criteria that are under Salem jurisdiction. There's also seven that meet that criteria under state jurisdiction. The blue color arrows are approaches where it's in the ordinance, but it is not signed. So obviously, no one knows it really exists, and there are 10 of those approaches. Blue, that's the blue color. The next color is like a light brown. That's the bulk of the approaches that are in the city, where it's not in the ordinance and it's not signed, so essentially, a right-on-red is permitted. And that's at 52 locations at all-city signals and 28 at the state. We also identified signage that isn't necessarily no right-on-red, but it says "right turn on red after stop." Still investigating the validity of that in terms of if it's in the MUTCD, which is the Non-Youall Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's a federally funded guidance for every state and local jurisdiction in the country. We have three of those, mainly in the downtown area. Once we had gathered that information, confirmed it in the field, we started working with Lieutenant Tucker to identify all crashes that occurred at these intersections, mainly with the focus of any collisions that might have involved pedestrians or cyclists. And the numbers that you see in the circles on the map represent the number of those crashes that occurred from October 1 of 2017 to July 3 of this past year. During that period of time, there were 840 crashes at the intersections with these traffic signals, 42 included pedestrians or bikers. And we sat with Lieutenant Tucker to start getting a better sense of what those crashes entailed, whether it was, you know, related in some way to the right-on-red or were there other circumstances resulting from the crash. With that, we also provided guidance that MUTCD provided when we finally finalized the map and shared it with the Council. Do you want me to read some of the guidance? Or, I also share that with you, I don't know if you want to just display it. Yeah, it should be on the desktop. There were two PDFs that I shared at the desktop. After we sent out the MUTCD guidance earlier, it was last year, the feds have since released an updated version. I've looked through it. I think the only change, and I'll confirm this, is Section C where it says "an exclusive pedestrian phase." Now it says "an exclusive pedestrian or bicycle phase." That's the most significant change I see. It takes them years to update the document, and they finally released it recently. So they provide really six guidelines when you're considering, you know, as part of engineering study, looking at what the conditions exist to install this type of signage. If there's inadequate sight distance to vehicles approaching from the left or the right. If the geometric or operational characteristics of the intersection might result in unexpected conflicts. Again, if there's an exclusive head or bike phase. If there's an unacceptable number of conflicting pedestrian movements with right-turn-on-red maneuvers, especially those maybe involving children or older pedestrians or persons with disabilities. More than three right-turn-on-red crashes reported in a 12-month period for the particular approach. I don't believe we've had that, but like I said, the data, we need to update that. Or the skew angle of the intersection roadway creates difficulty for drivers to see traffic approaching from their left or right. So, these are guidelines that they provide to local state officials when they're helping to determine the placement of signage like this. Just to go into some examples, if you want to go back to the map, I'm sorry. So if you zoom into the downtown, you see the number 6. That's at the intersection of Washington, Norman, and New Derby. And, so as you could see, the northbound approach is in blue, meaning that it's in the ordinance, but it's not signed. The westbound approach and the southbound approach are not in the ordinance and they're not signed, so red turns are permitted. And then you have the case of the yellow arrow, which indicates that a right turn is permitted after a stop is made, a full stop. So that's just one example. Like I said, we're still digging into the reasons behind the crashes that were reported there, but that's just one example of the variety of designations depending on the approach. We also have areas up by Webb and Bridge where you have only two approaches where one and two reported crashes during that time period. The northbound approach is not in the ordinance, but it is signed. And the westbound approach is not signed and it's not in the ordinance. So again, right turns are permitted on red at that approach. So there is a mix of this throughout the intersections. And again, there's a lot under state jurisdiction, those 14. Happy to go into more detail. We also, this map also highlights the roadways that are under state jurisdiction, just to clarify that a little better.
Is there a state road that's not necessarily in compliance with what ordinances say? Did I hear you mention that?
Yes, actually, if you go to the intersection of Jefferson and Canal, where you see one crash reported, both of those approaches are not in our ordinance, but they are signed. And I'm speculating, but that may just have been part of the design when, because I believe that was part of a MassStop project in the past when that intersection was reconstructed, is I think part of the Canal Street, the Greater Canal Street project.
Okay. That was a really quick overview of the data, and I knew that people are going to need some time to look into this and just go and look at the lights as well. But, any questions so far? We also have Lieutenant Tucker here, so if there's any questions on the data for the crashes, now's a good time to ask that. Yes, Counsel Harvey.
Just want to clarify, when you say "signed," does that mean there's a sign there already saying "no turn on red" or a sign saying it's allowed?
So in the instance of the green arrow where it's saying in ordinance and sign, that's nine approaches where it is signed. So I can change the means of nine approaches that are signed. There are signs there.
Okay. And now my next question is, you say there were incidents where pedestrian or bicyclists were involved with the accident. Was the vehicle in violation, taking a right-on-red when he's not supposed to?
That's where I would like to call up Lieutenant Tucker.
I'm just curious as to how many of the accidents were actually cited accidents in comparison to just, you know?
To answer that, I haven't completely finished, this involves reading every report to get a handle on what actually happened. So I haven't finished every single crash listed here. I was also looking at overall crashes, not just pedestrian and bicycles. But so far, I focused on the downtown area. So far, I've only come up with three collisions where a vehicle made a right-on-red and struck, in two cases struck a pedestrian, in one case, a bicyclist was struck. And then, and there was one more where a vehicle rear-ended another vehicle as they were both turning. One was, I'm sorry, one was turning right on red, the other was at the right-of-way. In most cases, when a pedestrian's hit, in most cases, the operator's cited unless they're truly not involved. And to go back to an earlier question you had, on the "signed" versus "not signed," the only time, the only signs we have where it tells you you can is in three locations with the yellow arrow. Everywhere else see this, if it says "signed," it's "no turn on red," or "no turn," yeah, "no turn on red," and "not signed" would just be obviously.
Counsel, stop.
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, the double negative is killing me here. So the blanket rule is you can take a right-on-red. The "in ordinance" piece that you're referencing on the legend means we would have to write "in" in our ordinances that there is no turn-on-red. So when we say it's not in the ordinance, that there's not a no turn-on-red, okay, the double negative was just written. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that question because I thought I got it, and then I was like looking at the words. So I just had some other questions that popped in my mind around the data. I'm expecting you don't have it, but I would love to have Mr. Giardini part of the conversation as well, because I'm immediately going to which of these are smart signals, how many are controlled by that as well. And then the pedestrian exclusive phases, like how many in our city do we have that are like that? That would be really interesting to know, just in comparison. Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Merkel. Thank you, Chair Marcello. Not being a member of the committee, just some clarification in regards to the guidance where it says if there's more than three right-turn-on-red accidents reported in a 12-month period, then it's kind of advised to not allow it moving forward. But, Mr. Kacharsky, I think if I took my notes correctly, you quickly said you didn't believe we've had that. So we haven't had a situation where monitoring these, that we have disallowed it because we've had three in a year. I was just curious about that, that if that is monitored, you know, in each 12-month period, and, you know, if offhand, we think we've ever hit that marker and changed it. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't believe we have, but we'll double-check. And like I said, the data that we're reporting had ended this past July, so we haven't updated the information, but we will take a look at it to see if any of the signals have had those crashes. But again, I think it's related to, the Counsel was saying, was it related to the fact that a vehicle was making the right on red and that was cause for the crash that occurred?
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. So this is kind of anecdotal. In my ward, I have a few, you know, stress areas like, you know, Riley Plaza, but in particular, around Lafayette Park, down to where Washington Street meets Mill, Canal, and Washington Street, because it curves. And it's anecdotal because if you come southeast on Washington, up towards Lafayette Street, that intersection where the Daily Table is on the other side, that's, we've talked about this, that's not a geometric intersection, which causes a lot of confusion. But that light has a sign, it's one of the three, I guess, that says "right-on-red after stop." And not only myself, but other people, I think, you know, Counsel Prozinski and I have talked about it. It seems that when people are confused, they just don't go anywhere. So it kind of causes them to stop, and people beep at them. But I've rarely seen people go through that intersection, and maybe that's because it's kind of a dangerous intersection. On the other side, and I know Commissioner Cherevsky and SWAG, we've talked about, we're fortunately getting a crosswalk stop sign where Harbor and Washington meet. That's really a dangerous area because cars have no idea whether they should go or not. It doesn't seem to be a right-of-way. And then the intersection, when Washington turns onto Washington, when you're going north, is a right-on-red. And I've always been curious because of what I've seen with the sign that says "after stop," what would happen if there was a sign that said "after stop," and we talked about that? So just a query, because I don't know if other people think about this, but we don't really have a lot of data with signs that say "stop after," you know, "red-on-red after stop." And I do think that signage sometimes causes people to stop around the schools. We put, you know, signs that I think slow people down. So just a thought, you know, obviously, I don't have data, but Washington to Washington, I probably do that three or four times a day, and I would say 50% of the cars don't stop at all at that intersection.
Counsel Drusillo.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Kacharsky, with all these different intersections, have they ever thought of different calming measures? I know we've been working down the Willows for the last four years on a great calming, traffic calming measure with Lieutenant Tucker, and it's actually just started, and we thank you for all your work on that. But have they thought of the other, like, different calming measures? I know Riley Plaza is a mess. How about some raised crosswalks to make the pedestrians more visible when people are taking a right from, say, Norman Street onto Washington Street? Better lighting at some of these, you know, traffic signals? Painted crosswalks, some of them are pretty, you know, you can't really, visible and stuff. Have they thought of different measures like that to make these intersections safer? Thank you.
We have looked at other measures. In one example, that Counselor Cohen brought up at Lafayette and Washington, we actually worked with the city electrician to do some signal timing phase changes to that signal to give the pedestrians a little more time. So we have done that. I know there's other efforts, just looking at Webb and Setella and Essex as part of the Crowley development. We're all going to be looking at that intersection, so there are things. But, yeah, we could certainly, as part of this, come up, maybe there's, and striping is always, if things are faded or signs are down, we try to replace them.
Counsel Cohen.
My second final.
You can have as many as you want, it's a committee meeting.
That's all right. I just want to follow up on the intersection that we were talking about. One of my favorite constituents, Mr. Kapanas, brought that up. When people are going south on Lafayette Street and the light turns red, two or three cars will just sit in the intersection, ready to take a left onto Washington Street, and there's a crosswalk there. And he had figured out that when the signal tells you you can walk, is exactly when the cars who are illegally in the intersection, because it was red, take a left. And we just, I think, delayed it like 10 seconds or five seconds, and then there's been no issues since. So I think that coordination with the signals is really important. There's also a signal there where there's a person who is blind who lives on Porter, and I have to say I'm ignorant about this. It's something hopefully everyone will think about because we all look at the lit-up numbers counting down to zero, and this blind person couldn't hear the audible. And so Mr. Giardini fixed that, but I think no one would have realized that unless you had a sight issue, for example.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to kind of offer up just kind of broad statistics that I saw were interesting. They're not Salem-specific, but of course, you know, Salem hasn't done this. In Washington DC and in Maryland, there was a really significant decrease in vehicle, pedestrian, and vehicle cyclist collisions. It was 40 to 90%. I just thought that was really, really notable, right? It's not like the jury's out on that. And then the severity of the crashes really changed because you have to make that stop first, really changes the speed of the impact if there is a collision. So I thought that was really interesting. In terms of a question, I wanted to go back to Counsel Harvey's question. I don't know, I apologize if I kind of missed the answer, but you talked about three collisions at a particular intersection where the driver is going right-on-red, and I missed whether, were they allowed to go right-on? Was that, I don't know if I understood, I missed it, or if you could repeat.
No, that's a good question. We actually didn't get in.
We actually didn't get into that. One was a car turning from Bridge Street onto Washington, taking a right. It's allowed there, and it is actually a right lane, slip lane for that. In that case, the driver was cited, the driver cited, cited solar glare as a factor, but they received a citation.
Thank you.
Didn't yield. Another instance was heading south on Washington, right on Norman. The crosswalk timer was activated, and the driver, his excuse was a pillar in the windshield blocked his view, but he was making a right on red against the pedestrian phase, and he was cited. In another case, vehicle was traveling south on Lafayette at New Derby, making a right on red. A bicyclist came from, actually, the report isn't clear which way the bicyclist came from, I believe it was from the left. And that driver was cited, that bicycle was actually left, so we don't know who that was, but, I'm sorry, I apologize, the driver wasn't cited, the bicyclist left, conclusion cited. And then the fourth instance so far, vehicle on Canal Street making a right on Washington, rear-ended another vehicle, that vehicle for some reason took off. I don't believe that's right, but I believe was cited, so that's what we have so far. But, in those cases, it was allowed, it wasn't a sign prohibiting it. It should have yielded to pedestrians in those cases.
Counselor Watsonville. Thank you, Chair Marzillo. Sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak, sorry. I have a couple of questions that are not necessarily specific to the right on red issue that we're talking about tonight, but is sort of all encompassing, connected, the way that all signals and stuff are. So, I have a, I've often wondered how the durations are set around crossing lights, not just the time it takes that allows for the pedestrian to cross, but also the duration between hitting the button and the change of the signal. I think a lot of the time, you know, I'm specifically thinking about that intersection at North and Federal, right, when you're coming through, there's two sets of lights there at the, the pass that comes up. And I know, I, there is a no right on red there, which of course is, is, that law is broken consistently all of the time by just about everyone but me, because I refuse to do it. But, I also observed there, that when you hit the button as a pedestrian, it does take a long time in that instance for that light to change, longer than most that I've observed just walking around the downtown. And I think that encourages people to cross without waiting. And then I think we get this combination of people are not stopping, and they are taking an illegal right hand on red, and they are coming up against pedestrians who maybe are illegally crossing. And I wonder if, how that timing and intersections like that are sort of all, all worked out.
I can't speak specifically, it's an, a traffic engineer can, can do that based on the volumes that the intersection has, even by certain times of day, and with an understanding of the pedestrian volumes as well. That particular intersection is something that Mr. Giardi is working on now as part of the smart signal, to better coordinate the signals along that entire North Street corridor with cameras, which would help with that issue. Not necessarily people obeying the, the right on red, but, so that's, that's something that's in the works. But, again, it's based on observing the traffic and understanding the volumes that are there, and how to best process it, both for pedestrians and, and motorists.
Thank you, that's really helpful. How often are those sorts of things reviewed? Are they reviewed at trigger points based on incidents? Are they reviewed on trigger points based on reports or complaints? Or do you have a systematic cycle of review, where you sort of move through the city on an, you know, annual or biannual basis, and you kind of look at these in divisions?
Take this one. It's, well, from my, my experience, it's generally complaint-based, or the city electrician might become aware, a lot of times the signal's, you know, becoming operable due to their age, so he repairs them, and he revisits that, or his group. And to go back to your early question and tie it in, he has to balance the needs of, you know, the flow of the traffic and the volume of pedestrians within a limit, because you want a pedestrian to not wait forever, use the signal. Another thing that we've discussed with him is the length of crossing, length of time. That's usually, we usually, in response to a complaint, someone says, I don't get enough time, I walk there a lot, I don't have enough time to get across. One thing we've asked to investigate is, some signals you can, if you quick press, you get, you know, a normal amount of time, and then if you hold the signal, it'll give you a longer crossing. So, if you're disabled, or you weren't moving too fast, you do get more time. But, the average user could do a quick cycle, and be careful for traffic. That's a possibility that we're looking into.
Thank you. And then, I still have the floor, is that right, Chair? Okay, thanks. And then, I guess my last question is, this, the work you've done here to collect this data, Dave, is, is amazing, and I super appreciate it. And, and we've all covered that it was really comprehensive and, and really helpful. I'm curious how frequently, if at all, you kind of look at this stuff, this sort of, you know, how many incidences at right on reds, or is this something that you're, I know, I completely acknowledge your department is so busy and slammed. If the answer is no, it's understandable. But, I'm just curious if this is, if there is a systematic review cycle that you take a look at in partnership with Lieutenant Tucker around incidences versus ordinances that exist, signage versus ordinances that exist? I think it's a lot of learning in this, right? And so, I'm just curious if, if that happens on a, on a regular cycle.
The answer is no. This, when Counselor Marzillo approached me with it, I thought it was a good opportunity to do an inventory, and that's why we, we took the time to, if we're going to do this as good as we can, so we know what we're dealing with. I see it almost as like an asset management program here. And, yeah, I hope, like, moving forward, again, you know, working with Mr. Giardi on the smart signals, we can, we can have a better path forward. And, you know, if there's development projects, or corridor projects that we're working on, we certainly do it as part of that as well. Boston Street comes to mind as part of the larger state tip project. I know that, that'll be something that gets done as part of that effort, so.
To that, could I offer just a suggestion as well, that as we continue to make changes in the city specifically, I'm thinking like, you know, we put in the rotary at the, at the mouth of Norman and Summer and Chestnut, for example, right? As you begin to put these newer mitigation efforts in for, for traffic control and pedestrian safety, I wonder if there should perhaps be a, a review at some point, you know, a year, 18 months, 24 months down the line, to say, not only, not just is it working, but maybe what else does it need, right? Is the lighting sufficient? Is there necessary for more crossing? Is it, you know, whatever the case may be. I understand with these efforts, we've talked a lot about, sometimes it just, it takes time for them to, to take effect, and for us to see the benefits of those changes. And I also don't necessarily always feel like they're completely done yet, or they've not quite met their, their goal. You know, maybe there's a little bit more we can do in those places. So, as you think about this, moving forward, any, any cycles, I would offer that, that be part of it, too. Please, thank you.
Great. Any other counselors? I also just want to say that what, what the impetus was behind my putting in this order was that I walk a lot. I walk downtown, I walk through Riley Plaza, and every single time, it's a frustration. And it's a frustration because I wait for the walk signal, and it doesn't matter. Like, you have the crosswalk signal, you should be okay to walk, and cars just keep taking their right on red to go up Washington Street. The other thing that happens is that cars don't stop until they're sitting right over the crosswalk. So, because they're queued up to take that right on red as soon as they can, they're blocking the intersection. It happens all the time. You go to a flag raising, and it's, it's, it's just so, it makes me so anxious, because right behind us are people honking their horns for somebody to take a right on red, they cannot see the intersection, they have no idea what's going on there. It's a busy area in the downtown. And so, that's what caused this. You know, is there any way to make this safer for everybody, not just pedestrians and cyclists, but for drivers, too? Like, cars are, they're, they're creating more congestion in that intersection, because they're queuing up, trying to find a space to fit in, even though there's nowhere for them to go, but they're out in the intersection. It just, it makes me crazy. So, I appreciate, I appreciate this conversation. Counselor Harvey.
Quick question. Whatever happens to red and yellow?
To what now?
Red and yellow lights.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm just curious, because you pull up to an intersection now, and it's a red light and a flash in hand, and then it counts down. There's no more red and yellow. Now, I know the kids are still being taught in school, you cross the street when it's a red and yellow light. But, you pull up to an intersection, if the driver saw a red and yellow light, they might not be as apt to take a right on, because it's a crosslight. But now, it's like, it's just a red light, and exactly that, if they're not noticing, you know, they're not, they're looking to the left to see what's coming, so they can take their right on red. They're not looking at that little box where there's a hand, and then a bunch of numbers counting down. But if they saw a red and yellow light, they would know that it's a crosswalk in progress, and they're supposed to stop, because that's what they're taught when they go to driver's end. But yet, there are no more red and yellow lights anywhere. At least, I haven't seen any. So, that's, I mean, I don't know, is that something even possible on the traffic lights anymore?
So, to the, to the best of my understanding, there are still a couple out there.
Lafayette.
Yeah, Lafayette, Jefferson. My understanding was the MUTCD, the Highway Administration, basically does not recommend those, so it's kind of, if you have it, you can keep it and maintain it, but if you do any major renovations to the intersection, they don't believe you're supposed to install that. There are other options available, but I, I agree with you, that, that should, that would be an additional indicator that there's a pedestrian involved. I don't know if people would obey it.
Or, even if they were to put, when the walk light is pushed, a flashing red light, pointing towards the vehicle, letting them know that, you know, you can't turn now, it's a crosswalk, it's a walk. Because my biggest fear is, and I see it happen all the time, is there is a walk light going, and I see the car in front of me, like Counselor Marzillo just said, they're edging out, edging out, because they want their right on red, and there's a nine or 10-year-old kid that sees the number four, and he decides he's going to try to book it to make sure he catches those numbers. Whereas, I think if there was a flashing light, or something pertaining to the fact that it is a walk light to stop these vehicles from taking the turn at that point. I mean, right on red's great to keep traffic flow going and stuff like that, but I just, just a thought, as far as, a different type of indication to let the vehicle know that it is a walk light. Thank you.
I do want to add to that, though, that the law is that you're supposed to stop at the red light, look, and then take your right on red. That hardly happens. People slow down and turn, but they do, it's rare that they stop and, or follow the law. It's, stop on the red light, look both ways. Like, that's my frustration on this. We can add more lights, and they'll continue to ignore them. That's, I mean, they're ignoring the law. The law is stop, look, and then turn. So, I hear you, and I, and actually, there were lots of emails that I got about that combination of red and, and yellow, that I think, like you said, that's not, it's not legal anymore, not standard. But, I did get a lot of that. So, people remember it, and apparently, it did work at one point, but, yep. Counselor Davis.
Just, thank you, Chair. Wanted to build off what you and Counselor Harvey were saying, and thank you for your work on this. I think this is a, a really important conversation, and I just wanted to add that I'm excited about any conversation where we're starting to transition from prioritizing cars and car infrastructure to people, whether that's pedestrians, cyclists, small children, right? I share in your frustration of, of having that exact scenario where you're walking across, you think you're ready to go, cars keep coming. And I don't think we really acknowledge enough as, as a society about how much we lose when cars are the top priority. So, I see this as a, as a larger discussion. And, and I'm curious, too, about the other potential solutions for this, right? And I, I'm, I don't know if I'm imagining this, but it is a thing in other communities. I think I've seen where there's a, kind of like a protected green right, and potentially that could be kind of like worked into crosswalks. I don't, I don't know if that's like a potential solution that has been looked into, right? But, I, I could imagine a situation where it's, it's red, there's no right turn allowed, and then maybe it, there's a protected green light for once the pedestrian crosswalk is done, or something like that. I don't know if that's a question, kind of just throwing that out there.
Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you, Chair, again. Kind of not specific to the right on red again, but similar to what Counselor Drizlo had offered before, is there a reason, or is there, is there any standard around the use of like a rumble strip at either a slip lane, or the crosswalk, or, you know, anything? Is that, is that a part of, of a potential solution? I'm thinking about particularly this issue of like Norman and, and that intersection at Riley Plaza, and also Bridge, Bridge Street, which you noted earlier with the slip lane, as being two intersections that are often red lights are run, whether it's a right on red or not, they're just run. They are, intersections are completely blocked, and, and side, cross, crosswalks are also blocked. And I wonder if they're similar to the concept of the yellow and red being something sort of out of the ordinary, that you're not used to seeing, kind of calling your brain to attention? I wonder if a rumble strip option is, is, is a potential solution there? No.
Well, I'd have to investigate if something like that, especially if you're putting them near crosswalks or something, would become, it'd have to be the placement. I know that there's more tactical things where you could put even some type of smaller speed humps.
Yeah.
Flex posts as a temporary measure, where you're, you're making a more of a 90-degree angle at a, at an intersection, so that the motorist, instead of making a sweeping right, they're forced to make.
Square.
Square it off. And I've seen that in, in a lot of cities, they, they do something like that, so you're still, you're not just, you know, swinging bass somewhere, you really deliberately have to make that turn. So, I think that might be similar, but I could see rumble strips as an option, but certainly, something like that is, is used elsewhere.
Thank you. I want to just, I want to echo Counselor Drizlo's point about raised crosswalks. I'm a big fan, you know that. We've talked about them a lot, and a lot of the locations throughout the downtown, if I had my way, I'd box the whole downtown in raised crosswalks. But, I also know they're not always an option, they're not always feasible for, for very fair engineering reasons, and, and so on and so forth. So, I was just trying to think through something else that sort of does a similar, has a similar effect, right? Sorry, go ahead, Lieutenant Tucker.
See, it's funny you mention rumble strips, because we just had a discussion with the DOT about a different location. And we're not exactly necessarily done with that conversation, but their, their, their position on rumble strips is that they don't, like, they don't advocate putting them in near residences because of the noise created. So, that's something, it's just a one factor. Doesn't, it's not a deal breaker. And then, as you referenced, the raised crosswalks are very, pretty good. Usually, the number one obstacle is drainage, if it's somewhere where it's going to create chronic, you wouldn't want to do that. And then the speed factor, sometimes people ask for speed bumps on main roads and speed humps, but depending on the volume and the speed, it just wouldn't be a smart idea to raise a crosswalk, a road that has a higher speed, or a super high volume, you guys suggest against that.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marzillo, and I apologize to the commission, because I know they have stuff they might want to offer. I've become a really big fan since, you know, I live off of Lafayette Street, which has some really treacherous areas, like from Marblehead to West Ave. And, and then, you know, the intersections I talked about near Lafayette, and of course, near the Salton Stoll, which is really a, a difficult area, especially for kids getting to school on bikes or pedestrians. We had an issue at Savoy and Lafayette, where I know there'll be a bigger, you know, a bigger project to address that, but they put up one of those bright yellow signs where the crosswalk is, that's incredibly dangerous. That's an incredibly dangerous crosswalk. People have been timed going, you know, at ridiculous speeds. And, you know, just having sat there, I know Counselor Verrill and I sat there together, we noticed that people do look at the sign. And around the Saltonstall School on both sides, there's not a lot of signs. People complain, they don't like the way it looks. But the, the sign that says, you know, that they're measuring your speed, even when the monitor doesn't work, I think it works, you know, most of the time, but even when it doesn't flash the speed, I notice people slowing down because there's something that says we're monitoring your speed. And it's incredible because the speed limit at the school zone is 20, and I purposely slowed down to 18, but people are going 40. I mean, it's amazing how abrupt people like put their brakes on. And the last thing is, I don't know if it was Boston or DC or someplace, they had signs above the signals that said, you know, you're on camera or there's a camera here or something like that. And my wife and I were just walking around, I can't remember where it was, and we noticed people slowing down because it said you're on camera. So I actually feel like lights are one thing and rules are, you know, like lights, but I do feel like signage that makes people think, hopefully, may make a difference. I don't know how you feel.
Just to pair that anecdote with an anecdote from the other side, those speed, those speed signs also make people do the opposite and see how fast they can go and what number they can get on that, on that sign. I've seen that on Broad Street. So it's disturbing and it doesn't happen a lot, thank goodness, but it happens, so.
The new technology for that is it cuts off, it will, will give you a 99, it'll cut you off.
Good to know. Good to know.
Wise to that.
When I saw 65 on Broad Street, I was like, this is wrong.
The new signs, they just say slow down if you hit us.
Please, slow down. Counselor Sot.
Thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee. Yeah, we saw that on Bridge Street bypass, that was a raceway. But yeah, no, just flashes go slow. So I think we could all definitely get into specific, especially the work counselors here, specific intersections that we want to talk about and there's a lot of, but I'm still kind of like wrapping my head around the data and looking at this as a holistic, like what are we trying to solve here, problem or, or issue? A lot of what we're talking about is how do we make people follow the rules, which is like they should just be following the rules. It's, it's bananas to me. So a lot of the questions that I got was about enforcement. Well, if people aren't following the rules, then we just need to make them follow the rules. But as Chair Marcello said in her, her message that was sent out at the, I believe at the beginning of the meeting, we cannot afford nor do we want to place an officer at the, every single corner in the city. But we also did just do a home rule petition for camera enforcement. And I think, I know out in San Francisco, I don't know if it's the whole state of California, but they have intersection cameras issuing tickets. And if you drive there, you are very, very careful not to turn right on red if not allowed or taking lefts when the light is turning. Much more safer, much more carefler. So it's almost like we're doing our pre-homework for that because if that did become a thing, our no right on reds had to actually be in our ordinance if we wanted to write a ticket for it, if I'm correct. So these all, these places that say no right on red, we wouldn't be able to write a ticket because it's not actually the rule. So I think that's really good that we're at least doing that part phase of making the ones that are labeled as no right on red, actual no right on reds that we can ticket and enforce. But along with the enforcement question, I have been asked by a few constituents, so I'd like to maybe see at a future meeting, just data around enforcement, like how many, comparatively year over year, tickets have we issued for people that, you know, did like the California stop at the red light and just rolled on through and didn't actually do a, a full, full stop? It'd be interesting to see that data in overtime.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey.
I, I, the question is, like you just brought up, was in enforcement. There's no city in the country that has a police officer at every intersection. It's called word of mouth. So if we had a couple more offices in the traffic division that were going around the city, not necessarily at every intersection, but word of mouth gets around when they say, hey, be careful driving in Salem, they're going to tag you for this, they're going to tag you for that, you know, and that, and that works. I mean, it just, and like I've said before, it's like, if the people aren't being reprimanded for breaking the law, they're just going to continue to do it. You can put up as many signs as you want. You can put up a no turn on red sign. But if you're not going to enforce that no turn on red sign, what's the sense of having the sign there? So it all comes down to enforcement and it doesn't have to be at every intersection. But if you picked a, a certain ward or a certain area, you know, this week or, you know, and then two weeks later you picked a different area, you know, and then people are just being caught by surprise that, you know, hey, we're getting tickets in Salem, you know? We, 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 watch what you're doing. And then eventually the word gets out and people will stop doing what they're doing. But like I said, you can put signs up on every intersection in the city that say no turn on red. But if somebody's going to take that right turn on red because they know it's not going to be enforced, so it, it doesn't make a difference. And, and you know, that's why I think a little more traffic enforcement, and I know it's a manpower issue, then maybe we should put on another police officer on the force in the traffic division to start, you know, pushing this and getting the word out that we are, as the city in the whole, are gonna ticket you if you break the law. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I've gotten tickets in Salem, so I can attest that it's happening a little bit. Is it the case that if someone takes a right on red at a place where there is a no right on red sign, but it's not in the ordinance, that's unenforceable? That they can't get a ticket?
As, as long as they came to a full stop and then no pedestrian was trying to cross or anything like that, then it is allowable. It's, we wouldn't be justified in stopping them. We did just do a little, this is really just a snapshot, so we did just do a, a study of the 2023 tickets, but these are rough numbers, but did do, there's a department, 693 failure to stop citations last year, 513 speeding tickets, 188 cell phones. I only came up with 53 pedestrian violations, crosswalk violations. And then all tickets, you know, there were some one-off numbers, but, oh, 2,764. And, and those numbers are citations with fines. And then we issued 3,012 written warnings. And then there's a sprinkling of summons and arrest numbers. Altogether, it's up around 6,000 and something citations last year in 2023. What we'd love to figure out, you know, I think as Counsel Harvey said and you and others, we, we can't enforce our way out of everything, so we, we'll do it, but we also need to figure out how to change people's behavior, which enforcement is usually one of the better tools. But also, we, we've been trying to think about why people are doing, you know, why people are committing all these violations and things like that, so. I don't have the answers yet. If you have the answers, let me know. But we're trying to figure out not just punishment and enforcement, but how can we get people to drive properly?
Okay. I want to hand this over to the Traffic and Parking Commission for a bit.
Thank you, Chair. I'll kick things off with a, a couple of notes I was, I was taking during the conversation. So I think my feeling overall from this conversation is that, you know, there are a lot of tools in the toolbox to, you know, moderating driver behavior, you know, on our, on our streets. And the rules around no turn on red is one of those tools, right? It's one that clearly we've been messy with over the years. And I think that's been true in a lot of towns where we don't, our practices don't always keep up with our ordinances and vice versa. So cleaning this up is, is a good thing to do no matter what. And there are certainly intersections where it will be a good tool to, and to use to change how we enforce no turn on red or turn on red at those intersections, absolutely. Other ways that you can change behavior, some of these things cost more money than others. Again, it's a conversation to be had, you know, hardscaping, right? Changing the path of the intersection as, as the director mentioned earlier, right? Forcing the harder right turn, 90-degree angle turn, good way to force people to stop. You know, the, we don't really recommend slip lanes for turn lanes much anymore because people don't stop and they take those turns at, at higher speeds and you'll see more accidents that way. There was a notorious one in Boston last year where we had a driver blow through a slip lane and into the building on the opposite side of the street because they took the turn too fast. You see those on a not a regular basis. Another tool related to no turn on red, I figured I should mention because I didn't hear it come up yet. On some state roads, you'll, we actually have a no turn on red lit sign. So it's not always on, but sometimes during rush hour in particular, when traffic is heavier, that sign will illuminate for particular approaches. So that, that approach, you know, sometimes a day you can turn right on red and sometimes a day you cannot. So it's, again, a piece of electric infrastructure that we would have to procure and install, but it's another tool that we have.
Is it working?
If you want to come up to the podium, the, the mic there is a little bit better too, if that's not too much.
I think I'm good. Like I said, I guess it's two items. One, to the director a question, do you have data on intersections where there is no right turn on red sign and it's not in the ordinance, but there ought to be? Now, for example, the 52 or so orange ones, and I can think of probably several intersections downtown with busy crosswalks and they have exclusive pedestrian phases, but there's no sign there, but there probably should be based on the MUTCD criteria.
I think that's what's the conversation that we're going to have following this meeting. This is sort of to give everyone a chance to know what the, essentially the existing conditions are. And then we're going to do a, a deep dive and to say, where should we implement this? Should we, where should we have the cleanup of the ordinance? So I think we, there might be some, you know, using this criteria to help identify where it might make sense to, to introduce that, that type of signage.
So I guess my question is also based on, when you did the survey, do you have the data saying where you don't meet the criteria? Like, do you already have it or would we need to do another survey?
Well, we could just look through it. I mean, most of the signals in the city do have an exclusive phase. I think some of this signals that Mr. Giardi has put in under the smart signal program to introduce more concurrent phasing. But, you know, that would be part of it. And I, I know that councillors had asked for a little more detail on that. So we'd have to take a deeper dive into it and get that data as part of this.
Is it true that, would you say it's a true statement that a lot of intersections downtown or crosswalks would be getting more no turn on red signs if we apply these criteria?
I think we'd have to also, you know, factor in pedestrian activity and other things, sightline. It's not just, it's not all of them. I think that we have to look at it collectively to see what makes sense for each location.
Right, I'm not talking specifically, but.
Just look at it straight up, would it meet the criteria? Is that what you're saying? Just like.
Yeah, like if we went out there today, what is your sense that a lot more intersections would be getting signage if we applied these criteria?
I'm not ready to say that, I have to look more closely. We hadn't started doing it yet.
We'll ask you that one next time. My only other comment was on the turn on red after stop signs. Probably not the, the only person that these confuse because when I, as Counselor Marcello pointed out, the, the default law is you're supposed to stop anyway. So this sign is more of a reminder. When I see that sign, I, I think, oh, in the absence of that sign, do I not need to stop? Have I been overly cautious all along and I don't need to stop? And so I think the ideal would be we have these signs on every intersection, but if that's not feasible, they should be on no intersection, just so there's consistency of expectations. It's, I think it's almost not beneficial to have them on random intersections and not on other roads. It's more of a comment. Or I guess, do you agree or not?
Like, there's three locations like that. So if you look at those three locations, I think one thing that's similar is that you have a lot of pedestrian activity in those crosswalks. I think, I don't know the reason for putting those up, but it might have been just to reinforce the fact that there were too many instances, and I'm speculating, I don't know, of cars not stopping. And you had that conflict because there's a lot of pedestrian activity at those, if you look at those three, like, locations with either sightline or pedestrian volumes that I think required the, the city at some point to put that type of signage in, to just reinforce the behavior, even though it's law, people should be doing it. Probably getting calls or to do something, so.
Jump on that too. Part of the, that's a valid reason, as Mr. Kucheski said. The other part is those are areas where congestion is, will be very heavy. So it's, it's letting people know, maybe not quite clearly, but yes, you have to stop, but you can go. Obviously, they should know they should yield to pedestrians. But one spot, particularly in Washington, as you approach Lafayette Street, it's really not the best place to have a right on red, baby. But the flip side is traffic, because of the volume, because that's Route 114, because of the high, high volume, traffic will back up down the hill and affect the signal behind it. The one on, the one at Norman, in Washington, traffic will back up on Norman now, now to a rotary, to a roundabout, excuse me, but before it would create gridlock conditions further back on Norman Street. So those signs, I think, it's a, yes, it is a reminder, you have to stop and then make the right, but it's also letting you know it's okay to take that right to relieve some of that condition.
Yeah, thanks.
First of all, is that somewhere? So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Marcello for bringing this to the forefront. I think it's a really important conversation. I walk through the downtown area every single day. I live less than half mile from there, so it's a very personally important issue for myself too. But I just, I look at this as, the laws that permitted, as Counselor Marcello said, right turns on red were put into place in 1975. It was almost 50 years ago. It was in the name of fuel savings because there was a fuel embargo and an energy crisis. But it's important to remember that now, 49 years later, the vehicles that we're driving that were in, that we are driving today are very different from the cars that were in place when those laws were enacted. According to the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, the average US passenger vehicle has gotten four inches wider, 10 inches longer, eight inches taller, and 1,000 pounds heavier over the past only 30 years, not 49, only 30. So I think this is really an important thing that we need to do because just the physics and the math of everything, the laws that were written 50 years ago can no longer be applied to the cars of 2024. And we're seeing an increase in pedestrian and cyclist access crashes because we haven't accounted for that change. So thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention and I am really interested in seeing how we can fix this as a city. I think sticking with these, at a very minimum, sticking with the recommendations where, like the pedestrian-only phases downtown, I think that would be a really great place to start. I would, I'll just also like to point out that the City of Boston's 2023 Traffic Signal Design Program also recommends that. So this is something that I think is being adopted in many more places and we just owe it to our vulnerable road users to continue to keep up with the changing traffic landscape.
Okay. All right. Any other councillors before we move to the public? Yep, Counselor Harvey.
Dave, thank you. This might be a question for John Giardi, but being an electrician, I know it's possible. But do they even make it? If when the walk light is pushed, is there a no right turn on red sign that could illuminate when the walk light is pushed? I know it's feasible, but do they make such a thing that you would put directly on the pole that has the hand and the numbers counting that would just turn on, that says no turn on red at that point? So that it's not a constant no turn on red, so that it does also help keep the traffic flow going when somebody's not pushing the, the walk light? help keep the traffic flow going when somebody's not pushing the, the walk light?
I believe that exists, but I'd certainly check with John to, to find that out.
Thank you.
Like, it's something that, that does exist.
I just think it sounded a little more, more...
I'm sorry, a little more, that's the word I'm looking for, feasible, just, you know?
I alluded to it earlier with technology, Mr. Kamindia brought it up, they do exist. I don't know what the cost associated with vehicles on that, that's virtually a factor. I'd love to see that phased in during the pedestrian, if you press the button to cross, when you get the walk signal, that should come on, and it would be a bright lit indicator of vehicles move. And then at 2:00 AM, when there's no one around, stop, and you can make your right on red. Because if it was just a, a traffic cycle without a pedestrian activation, that would be a good solution. I don't know when, when we'll see that.
I can, I can add an answer to that. If you want to look at a real-life example, Route 1A at Wonderland Train Station in Revere, they have that.
I go by it all the time. Thank you.
Counsel Presmisky.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. Great, great ideas, and this is something that's been at the forefront of, I think, every resident is, is about the, the traffic and the safety in the city, you know, we're an old city, we're unique. People have, people that lived here know that we weren't set out on a grid to facilitate motorists, we're using what was used before as wagon paths, cod paths, and foot paths as roads. And, you know, it's not like we can copy what a lot of other parts of the country do, because they came later on, and they were laid out in grids to facilitate traffic movement, and we kind of, over the years, have evolved trying to make traffic and pedestrian safety work together. And this, and what it's, what it's caused is, you know, you have, the pedestrians are angry at motorists, the motorists are angry at pedestrians, because I think we have, we have more of both in these days. There's been some good ideas tossed around. I think the, the public is happy to know that we've been trying to get red light cameras, which would help, I think, personally, I think that's probably the single most deterrent at, at some of the dangerous intersections. Now, we've talked about the speed bumps and the rumble strips. One thing that we haven't talked about that seems to work is, is some of the rotaries or the roundabouts that we've, that we built in the city. It slowed traffic down, it facilitated the movement, and it gave pedestrians a little extra place to pause and, and make it, make it a more safe intersection. So I think that's a, something that we should be looking at at some of these dangerous intersections, is, is the possibility, if, if you can't, in order to facilitate both pedestrian safety and traffic movement, I think roundabouts could help, and something I would, I would strongly urge to look at as, as one of the, one of the options used. Thank you.
Great. Counsel Merkel, did you have a question? No? Okay. All right, we are going to go to the public, and first up is Steve Kapantus, if you can unmute.
Stereo Street, Salem, Mass. I appreciate all this conversation tonight, and this coming forward, a lot of good talk tonight. And by the way, if you look at that map and those red dots, Mill Hill and Canal Street, I am that pedestrian that was run over by a car that was taking a right on red. They were cited, they weren't cited for right on red, they were cited for failure to yield to a pedestrian across walk. That said, what I've seen happening tonight is really good, because it's going to an area where this is a much broader thing than red lights and right turn on red. This is about pedestrian safety, and you touched on so many things, whether it was enforcement, design of crosswalks, traffic engineering, there are studies. I think we need to also include driver education, pedestrian education, and bicyclist education. But what I'm getting to is, I, I think this needs to change from, are we discussing right on red, or are we discussing pedestrian safety? And I think the right topic is pedestrian safety, and then we take all of this data that's been collected, and now we pick specific intersections and say, okay, this is the one we're going to work on first, because we've had more accidents here, or we've had more near misses, and start implementing all the things that were discussed tonight. Because if we try to say no right on red across the city, I don't think we accomplish what we want. So I would suggest that this board starts to set up a task force that is going to look at specific intersections, what changes are needed to improve safety and traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapantus. Just to be clear, that is what this group is doing, and that is what the, the map has, is it outlines every single light, how it's signed, what's allowed at that light, and whether things need to be changed. This is not a citywide approach, we're not talking about eliminating right on red throughout the city, or even throughout an entire district. We're going to talk about this light by light. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none. Let me see, can I just turn that down a little bit? Any other questions from the council or from the Traffic and Parking Commission? So I think the intention moving forward is, we're going to try and split this map up into three groups, and then take it three different meetings and try and go through the lights, how it's currently signed, if there are issues that would require a change. We know that there's problems with how they're signed right now and what our ordinances say, so we have some cleanup to do anyways. And so why don't we talk about how we're going to split the map up? Counsel Rela, do you want to put the map back up?
As you could see, a lot of the signals in the southern end of the city are under state jurisdiction, which I believe we still do want to have discussions on, and then we'll, we'll obviously need to approach the state with. So if there's agreement, we can perhaps take that section on, or, or take on the extension of Loring Ave and Jefferson, and that sort of quadrant, if you will. I'd then recommend looking at Highland Avenue, and then the intersections around Boston Street, Essex Street, and perhaps even the two on North Street, and maybe even the two on Essex. And then I think a lot of the discussion will focus on the downtown area, basically everything along Bridge Street, the west of the Common, and the Point neighborhood. I think that would, might take a lot of the time, so I think that's sort of what's my recommendation, that might help us get through each of these.
So your suggestion is for the first meeting to do everything south of...
For the first meeting, everything along Jefferson Ave, Loring Ave, and Lafayette in the south, that is the first meeting. I mean, if we, if we...
And Highland? Most of that is state lights, right?
Most of those are state lights, yes. We could do that. Then the second meeting would be a lot of the intersections, maybe the rest of Highland at the intersection of the hospital, going all the way up, the rest of Essex Streets, including Boston Street and Bridge. And then also, I would say, the two signals on North Street, and possibly the two signals located on Essex Street at, excuse me, Webb Street at Bridge and Webb Street at Essex.
Okay.
Sort of get everything surrounding the downtown, if that makes sense.
All right. And then we'll do the downtown for the last meeting?
Sure.
Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll create a map with, and, and make it very clear which sections we're going to talk about, and the intent is to go light by light. And so for the state lights, are we going to then send in our recommendation to the state if there are any changes that we're recommending with reasoning? Is that, is that what's going to happen?
Yeah, that'd be the, the approach, because we, we would need permits to put up signs.
How, how successful are you at that?
I've got them to agree to reduce the speed limit in a couple instances, so I, I could be somewhat persuasive.
Okay, no, no, I'm, I'm just curious how responsive they are and how receptive they are to changes.
It takes some time, obviously, but I think it's worth, worth trying, especially if we're identifying locations that, that this could be called for, so.
Okay. Okay. Does that make sense, then? So we'll come up with a new map, we'll make it clear which, which lights we're going to talk about for each of the subsequent meetings, which right now I have scheduled for the 15th of February, the 29th of February, and then March, whatever that next week is, that first week in March, all Thursdays. Yeah, the sixth or the seventh, what, it's like sixth, maybe?
The first Thursday.
Yeah, yeah. That's the current schedule, if, you know, I haven't found any problems with that yet. Is that okay with, with you, Lieutenant Tucker?
Want to confirm with, I want a representative from the committee.
Yeah, so, so instead of co-posting, we can have, I think, two members attend? That wouldn't be breaking a quorum.
So if the lieutenant is attending...
Oh, then one.
Right, that, I was wanting to get clarification.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He's a designee for...
Yeah, he is a voting member of, yep, okay. So we can, I mean, we can discuss this further and decide whether we want to co-post it, that, you know...
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
We will, we will co-post all, all three of the meetings, then. Okay. Anything else before we go? Counsel Merkel.
Yes, Counsel Marcello, the first Thursday of March I have as the seventh.
The seventh, okay.
Yeah, the seventh.
That will be the third meeting. If that works out with everything, I think that that's clear, but, you know, that's what we'll go for right now. Okay? All right. Exciting stuff. Any other questions? Seeing none. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I move that we keep this in committee, co-posted with the committee of the whole and the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Okay. All right. Seconded by Counsel Watson felt, all those in favor? All those are, that's okay, it's just, it's just all, that's, that's fine. So that motion carries. We should have the Traffic and Parking Commission adjourn first, and then we'll adjourn.
I apologize, Chair, could you repeat that?
You, you need to adjourn first.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion from the committee?
Second.
Okay. So take, show of hands, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hands. All right, that looks unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Cohen.
Oh, I was going to let someone else do it. Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Cohen moves to adjourn, all those in favor, all those opposed. Thank you very much, thank you, everyone. This is really good, good work.